First by Charles, second by Glenn. Roll call vote, Ellie?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Charles?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Now that we're into our real public session, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we will have our first appointment. We have Greg Clarkson from North Shore Swing Dance. We had done a preliminary approval with some limitations and we just wanted to advise them to come back if they wanted to do the follow-up request. The request is to, there's gonna be Swing Dancing event here at the Town Hall. They did have a request in there if it could be allowed to offer a cash bar and alcohol usage at the Town Hall, so, welcome.
Just as a reminder, that little microphone sitting on the table, put it in front of you, and then push the button till it turns green.
Okay, now we're in business. So, yeah, we ran our Spring Formal for two years in Newburyport and we had a cash bar there. I actually dropped off, I know New Hampshire does not have some type of license, but the lady that I use is out of Massachusetts and she is licensed. So, you know, I mean, it's a nice little add-on. It's not like, you know, as we were talking downstairs, you know, it's not like the Swing Dancers are a group of, you know, like rowdy drinkers. It was just something a little extra nice, 'cause it is a formal. Everyone gets dressed up, you know, shirt, tie. Swing Dancers that I've never seen before actually put on ties for this. And, you know, I think it'd be a nice little addition here in Kingston, seeing as I've lived in the area for so many years and I'm liberally over in Fremont. So it's pretty much my take on things. You know, it's not like a major part of it, it's just a nice little add-on. And as I said, you know, especially with me being in Fremont, you know, I think it'd be kinda nice to make our Spring Formal a permanent thing here at Kingston Town Hall. That's what I would like to see happen, you know, over the years, so.
Has the Police Chief weighed in on this and is he aware of it?
I wanted to explain exactly when you say the cash bar, how would you set up people in mind with the water?
Yeah, so the Town Hall, we have no potable water.
Right.
So anyone that was going to do this, they would obviously have to be a self-contained operation if they were gonna offer that, 'cause they can't hook in any water systems or disposal and they'd only have access to up here in the bathroom, so they wouldn't even have access to the kitchenette downstairs.
Right, and so typically we have a, Josie brings a large container, you know, we have beer and wine and maybe like one or two more strengths, so it's really nothing that she's gonna use a lot of potable water for. As far as our food goes, the Chop Shop has their catering license, so everything is just catered there. So as far as the potable water goes, it's really, not really an issue with that.
What?
Will you have the insurance if you're gonna?
The insurance, I haven't gotten it yet, 'cause I wanted to see how this was gonna go. Seeing as, once again, the Chop Shop in Seabrook, I've known them for years. I actually have a meeting with Sue tomorrow, who actually does the catering license over there, and she's gonna refer me to the company that they used for the day liquor license up in Laconia during Bike Week. So if you need insurance, I have no problem getting that, because I think everybody should have insurance.
Yeah, if it were to be allowed, there would be a requirement for the insurance requirements, and that's outlined in the Facilities Use Form for events, especially ones that include alcohol, as well as, I know it wasn't in your packet initially, but there's a special indemnification form that was mentioned, 'cause we had similar forms we used during the Kingston Days events, so there is an additional indemnification form that would need to be provided. I did bring, you know, some folks were like, "Oh, we never really allowed alcohol to Town Hall." I did bring up that the town actually did a BYOB event in the past during Kingston Days activities. I personally have no issue with this, as long as it's, you know, the understanding that whoever operates it has to be completely self-contained, fulfills any requirements that New Hampshire Liquor Commission has for any daytime, you know, single day or single event permits, and as long as appropriate insurances are to be involved. But I mean, traditionally, Chief, I know events that have alcohol in town that we've allowed, there is usually a requirement for a detail officer. So that falls under your discretion as to whether an event meets that level, and obviously that cost is borne by the applicant. If they were gonna be allowed to do that, they would have to pay for the detail officer to be present.
Right. How many people do you think you're gonna have?
Typically, we, on average, have about 75, 80 people. So, you know, yeah, I would be, I would, if it was a BYOB event, yeah, I would have to like refrain from that, because I've been, I won't bring up the certain dance club in New Hampshire that advertises BYOB, and I've been there, and you can't police it at all. That would be my issue, because just like with everything else, you always have to have one or two that ends up ruining it, and so BYOB would absolutely be out of the question.
And I'm not advocating for BYOB, I'm just saying there have been events.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm not a fan of that, because that's all you need is one person.
What are you gonna do for parking?
What?
What are you gonna do for parking?
For parking?
Yeah.
Well, we have parking in and around here.
And that's gonna, you're gonna have enough here to cover the amount of people that are coming within this lot?
Yeah, we should, yeah.
Okay. That's my concern, that and smoking, and obviously no smoking, that goes without saying, inside the building here. And that's something Graham's gonna have to get, have an opinion on.
So do you have an opinion about whether a detail would be required or not?
Absolutely.
Okay, one officer?
We can get away with one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have to make sure.
If it gets out of control and turns out there's 200 people, gonna call somebody out.
Yeah.
For an additional officer, but I'll commit to one anyways.
I would feel better with an officer here anyway, so.
It's better that way, especially 'cause it's alcohol involved?
Yeah.
Yeah, just keeps everybody friendly.
There is, and we should've outlined that in the first response, that the Department of Public Works did indicate that a custodian is needed for the opening and closing to clean, to clean for the event, so that's a total of $160 there. Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, he was aware of those events, so I guess, do any other board members have any concerns against the landing this? Or?
Again, I don't have any problem with it, as long as you satisfy all the insurance requirements between our Primex and the person that you would have doing the catering and having the bar, and you have the police officer, I mean, I don't have any problem with that.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily have to be Primex, I mean, that's typically for municipal, but I mean, he can obtain coverage from a private carrier.
Right, right.
Right.
It's a certificate.
For whatever the town's stated limits are, and I believe that the town needs to be a named insured.
As an additional insured.
Right, right.
All right, so I'll.
The worst thing will happen is it'll be a disaster and we won't let you do it again.
You dancers, they're rowdy.
They can be.
They're about as rowdy as the Contra dancers.
There you go.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the reconsideration of the request for them to provide a cash bar alcohol service on the conditions that they provide the proper indemnification form, insurance requirements as required by the facilities use policy, and comply with any liquor license provisions that the state of New Hampshire requires, and get the detail officer through the Chief, please.
Okay.
Second.
Charles, second. Any further discussion?
Can you just remind us of the date and the time on it?
Yeah, the date on this is 3/16, so March 16th, 2024, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 11:00 PM.
So that's this, not this coming, but the following Saturday? A week from Saturday?
Yeah.
Yep.
And there's no events going on in here that's gonna obstruct parking?
Susan, did you check the calendar, right? There's no conflict with it? Okay.
All right, so on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to public comment number one. Anyone for public comment number one? Seeing none, we will move to committee liaison reports. I will start with Ellie. You wanna reserve the right to come back and?
I'll tell you what, pass by me, and then come back to me at the end.
Okay. As far as planning board, they, the last meeting that was due tomorrow, there's nothing on it, so they canceled that meeting, so I actually have no more planning board meetings during my tenure. So there will be no other meetings prior to, so whoever's gonna be filling that in, no write-ins. I'm not accepting write-ins during the, on Election Day. Charles?
I beat you to it, Glenn. The only thing I will say, just for those who were aware of it, the firefighter who was hurt during that recent fire has returned in his home recovering. So that's, that's good news, that's what I have. That's all I have.
So we had Fairgrounds meeting last Wednesday, and a lot of members from the Follybrook neighborhood showed up. I have the draft minute meetings that I'll probably send to you tomorrow, Susan. I haven't had any feedback from the other folks, so those will need to be posted. The next meeting is when we finalize the slides for the Select Board presentation, and then we'll do a public hearing at that time. And we had another transportation meeting at the library last week as well, and I'm working with Melissa to kind of finalize the minutes of those two meetings, and that's all.
And I don't think that I have anything to report.
Tell you what, you can bring it up under new business, if you remember by then.
I'm sure something will appear, but you never know.
Okay, so under old business, we have five Exeter Road, the change of use from unbuildable to buildable, so we did, we did bring this back up, and we got a letter from Dennis Quintel, and apparently we forwarded to, we forwarded it to council just for the how you actually changed that wording in there?
Yes, and I still haven't heard back from Huddy.
Okay. So it sounds like the town engineer did take a look at this and did make some recommendations that would have to be, you know, fall to make this buildable, which I believe, you know, my interpretation of the decision we made that night gave Pedro the authority to speak with the town engineer.
Yes.
The one thing I just do want to speak to is that, I know we brought it up for reconsideration, but I think we need to be very cautious when we do stuff like this, because we had a vote to essentially, a towns person came in asking for relief on something and asking, presented everything they had, and we made a decision. So then that individual goes out and is possibly investing money, signing contracts, going forward on progress based off of those types of things, and I get some additional information that came up, but it's, it's very, it's not, I just, I don't think it's really fair to our applicants if we're gonna bring back up information like that, and that's why I didn't mind us bringing it up to discuss the potential issues that happened, but even if we were at a point tonight where maybe something material or different had happened, I wouldn't be comfortable with taking any type of vote to reconsider the decision that we made, because we as a board, as a consensus, you know, may not have been unanimous, but we made a decision to move forward and we gave that resident, that taxpayer, that property owner, our affirmation that, okay, yes, we feel comfortable enough with pursuing this, and if they did make those type of investments and then we went back on that, I think that's problematic for the future, so I just, we need to be incredibly cautious when issues like this come up.
I didn't have any objection to reviewing, only from the perspective of making sure the wells were okay. And by going to Dennis Quintel, our engineer, it made the most sense to do that, but I too am in favor of moving forward with this approval, and if we have to tweak it a little bit to make everybody home, then I think we should do that, but.
I think, you know, there are things, there are complications that the owner knows they're gonna have to meet, and they could be, and for some folks, things could be prohibitive, but I found nowadays with any piece of buildable land, with enough time and money, anything's accomplished, and there seems to be no shortage of people wanting to buy it regardless of the costs associated with it, so I am personally comfortable with what our town engineer has reviewed, as long as they can meet these requirements moving forward, which I believe our code enforcement and building inspector has the authority to make sure these are met, and they understand that they have to comply with everything within the rules and guidelines that we have. We don't, 'cause we just, we just brought it that we were gonna discuss it again, but we didn't make, how did we, I, we said we wouldn't, I wouldn't, we wouldn't take any action unless the applicant and the individuals had a chance to be here.
Right, and the board already voted on it. The further discussion that happened didn't take any action, other than getting some input from the, from the town engineer, and that was it.
So if we don't take any action, I think our decision stands, as it did that night when we granted that it be presented as buildable, but I do want to offer an opportunity to the property owner and their representatives to speak to anything on this issue before we move past it.
Joseph Nichols, Nichols Environmental. So I reviewed the letter by Dennis Quintel for Civil Construction Management, just wanted to add a couple different things. Dennis asked about the existing waiver. We do have a copy of the town-approved waiver here, I can provide you with a copy of it that is town-approved, as well as the plan has been approved by the town of Kingston for the health officer, so we do have that approved, and it has been reviewed by the town. The concerns about the stormwater runoff, and Dennis's letter that's addressed in here that is minimal, and perhaps minor edits on the plan, but clarifying that, if you actually review the plan, the three Exeter Road side is elevation 100 on the plan, the proposed slab is lower than that, and it pitches back towards the existing drainage path that's currently there, so there will be no runoff, they'll go to three Exeter Road. The existing driveway for Magnuson Fields is higher by about eight to 10 inches and pitches towards the property line, so there'll be no infiltration, they'll go towards that property or the abutting property on the other side. The front side has an existing drainage swale along Exeter Road that the DOT put in when they put Exeter Road in, and that will continue to be the same drainage path, and the lot drains to the rear, which is designed to do, so.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, so it sounds like everything is possible, what you're trying to do, and is wanting to inform the building and the code enforcement and the county engineer to meet the requirements that we have in place, like, this board really shouldn't be involved in it after this?
So I have, I have one question. How do we legally make it buildable? Is there something that we have to change somewhere, or is it just us saying?
We made it legally buildable.
I think in our vote on that last thing, we deemed it was legal, because it was a vote of the board at the current time, years ago, that made it, or made it deemed unbuildable, but obviously everything, a lot of things have changed since then, and so the requirements and, you know, the things that are able to happen are very, I didn't, I didn't turn on my mic this time, are very different this time, so, and that's what made us allowed it. But I think we've legally met the requirement, I think we're just looking for a little added guidance from town council, is there anything else we should file or note in the property file to just make sure that that's?
Right, so we don't have to have this discussion again, right? So then we can put it to bed.
I mean, I'm guessing that we are gonna need to notify the town assessor, and make sure that the maps and the tax cards are corrected.
Yeah, that's the main thing, that's just the steps, the logistics, I wanted some guidance from Huddy, just to make sure we did everything we need to do. Okay.
But in the interim, I think, I think something should just be, until we have further guidance from our, just something should be placed in the property file that the board has voted that this site now we deem to be buildable.
Well, maybe a copy of the minutes from that meeting where the action was taken would be appropriate to put in the file. And the issue that I had on it, which has been addressed through Dennis's letter and through your discussion, is the, on such a small lot, just making sure that none of the runoff goes on any of the surrounding properties, because that, you can't do that, and you know that.
Yep.
And so our building inspector will be watching that as the construction takes place, and it should, you know, it should, it should be fine as long as it's engineered correctly.
Yep, perfect.
All right, so with that, board's not taking any further action, our previous decision stands, we apologize for any inconvenience or, you know, confusion, it's just, it was a, it was, I guess we've never gone through the process of changing an unbuildable lot to a buildable based off of a past decision to make it unbuildable, so apologize for the nuances, but, you know, just moving forward, I hope the board's just cognizant that, once we give a citizen the guidance to go forward, we can't really just pull that back.
Appreciate that, thank you very much, have a good night.
All right, our next item is the audiovisual contract troubleshooting.
So we had, Susan sent out an email to have Adam take a look at what was received as compared to what they said they were gonna deliver, and I think that everybody has a copy of that. Does everybody have a copy of that? And there were a couple of questions, and I don't know if he had a chance to get with Phil or not, and then the question also was, what's our balance owed to them? I don't, I don't know that we have the answer to that. And then if we can, like, what are our next steps? Because what Adam has indicated on his sheet is that there's three pieces of equipment missing, the microphones have not been sorted out, there was a switch because of what, I guess we originally ordered was not in stock, so they provided a replacement, which is fewer than the ones that we paid for, and then we still don't have all of the parts to have presenter mics. So, and then there's a limitation of how many microphones we can be working at the same time. So there's a lot of things with this contract that just aren't working, for me anyway, looking at it. So I don't know the next steps.
Yeah, so I mean, I remember even when I got onto the board, parts and pieces of this contract were starting to come in, or, you know, other claim was always supply chain issues, but parts and pieces of this contract have been flowing in for three, three years now, probably. And obviously, we're still, I think even the Director of Public Works brought up concerns that we keep putting Band-Aids, or we're even replacing antiquated equipment with antiquated equipment, so we definitely need to find out exactly where we are at with this current contract, 'cause it should not have been paid in full.
And I don't know if it has, right.
And we need to find, we need to find out what's still owed and how we can hold them accountable to this current contract. Okay, but we need to get actual details of what hasn't been paid in full, so we can get an accurate count on that, but more importantly, I think we need to have a professional assessment done of what needs to be done for that system for the future, so if we keep, you know, we keep trying to buy equipment that's not serviced anymore to plug in, in there, it's, you know, trying to buy parts off of eBay or whatever it is, we're not gonna do ourselves any problem fixing this.
Right, and there's just, there doesn't seem to be a good paper trail on this contract. The proposal that we signed as a contract was $40,000, and we ended up paying $45,000. So where's that delta? And where's the paper trail for that? And it's my understanding it had to do with the microphone replacement, which is an inferior solution, because we can't even use all of the ones that we were paid, that we paid for. So I don't know the next step. There's a clause in the contract that says we can still request final troubleshooting and user training, and one other thing, Susan, I can't remember what I had highlighted that I found in there.
Is this same, is this the same system that determines what can be used on the screen, the projector? So we have a system that, let's, for example, we can't use Macintosh, Apple products?
Oh, probably. Adam, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah, I have a problem with the.
We can't?
Yeah. Oh, see, so, so we don't have a full solution, and we've paid them probably 90% of the money, so. It has, it has.
So we need the details of that contract, and we may have to follow up, we may have to follow up with legal counsel, whether it's not, it's even able to be pursued at this point due to the length of the term that it's continued on. Are we out of luck here, or what can we still get out of this? But I still don't think it's gonna fix our long-term issues with some of the equipment that we're having.
Oh, I agree.
I think there needs to be a longer-term solution. I know our Director of Public Works is here, and he loves sourcing out fixes for infrastructure problems. Do you have any comment?
This has been kind of the ugly baby that's everybody's been passing around, nobody wants to hold on to, so it's kind of two different issues. We have the audiovisual contract, and then we have the broadcast booth, and I don't think both parts are talking to each other very well, and I had tried to do some research on this, but we need someone who's an expert in broadcast equipment, who can give us modern-day information as far as broadcasting to YouTube and on top of the cable channel, on top of, all those things integrated together, and that's not a knock on anyone, it's just we need someone who can get us on a modern footing with our equipment.
Well, and I, and I know some of the concerns we had in the past is that it was difficult to find anyone that was willing to even talk about the integration, they would, we could really only find vendors that were willing to sell us equipment, nobody was, we were having a difficult time even finding contractors that were willing to dive into troubleshooting the entire system.
Right, and I don't know if this gets into, this is a, more of a computer issue now than a hardware issue, I mean, I think it's, all this can be done off of a laptop and, at least that's the start of it, so I don't know if maybe Block Five might be the one, the one to speak to and just get some input from them, if they might know of someone, I don't know.
I know, there are teenage kids that seem to have easier times with their cellphone broadcasting a YouTube channel, like 10 episodes a week.
And I mean, granted, we're trying to bring in a lot of pieces of different vintages here to speak on multiple mediums, so it's, you know, again, it's not on anyone in particular, it just, we've gotta get the right equipment here to do what we're asking Adam to do and this building's.
We need the right 12-year-old to help us figure it out.
So to me, that begs the bigger question. So there's four different people involved in this audio, so that's really bad contract management, so I don't know who the point of contact is for handling this. Is it you, Phil, as Director of Public Works, 'cause you own the facility, or who owns, we have four people owning it, and that, that's part of the problem, I think.
Well, the bulk of this was done with two other people who are no longer here.
Right, right.
And then it just kind of became, well, who's gonna take care of it now?
Right.
Look, I'm a dumb construction guy, I don't, I don't speak computers, so that's a lot of this, what is involved in this, so it's kind of out of my realm, and at that point, it was looking through that very extensive contract, it's just a list of pictures.
Right.
And prices next to them, or not even prices.
There's no prices next to them.
Yeah, weird serial numbers and names.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, so I, basically I was like, okay, well, we got that, that, that's on the picture there, so there was no contract that I'm aware of, and I tried to hold some money back, or advised that we hold some money back, because we hadn't received all the hardware.
I think a former Select Board member was kind of spearheading all the conversations between the company, and obviously, you know, with them not being here anymore, you can't, you know, they can't speak on behalf of the town, so that's kind of problematic. I mean, you may not understand audiovisual, but you obviously understand. I mean, you may not understand audiovisual, but you obviously understand town contract and how that's supposed to work. Can you engage with somebody who can speak all the audiovisual stuff and, you know, outline the provisions, what we need to do to look at fixing this?
Sure.
So is that, so that's my question. Is Phil in charge of this?
I, I think this falls into more infrastructure. I mean, you know, I appreciate how much Adam knows about audiovisual and his, you know, technical expertise, but he's part-time, he's not here, he's not apartment head. He's, he's not essentially, you know, if he disappears yesterday, who's in charge of the physical structure and the investment into the town and the community? I think that's going to have to fall under something larger.
I, I agree. And is, you know, to me, this makes an argument for a town administrator, because then they could be the contract manager. But aside from that, is, like, is Phil the right person? Is the Director of Public Works the right person, since infrastructure falls under him?
Well, you get buildings and grounds.
Right.
But we also have Block Five. I don't know why we're not pulling them into this. I mean, they've, they helped integrate our phone system, is that correct? I mean, they've done.
Well, they sold the phone system.
Well, okay. But, but it works, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes, it does. What, what, what's your hesitation, Phil?
I have a very, very, very full plate right now. And this is like learning, you know, astrophysics on the side when I have moments.
Yep.
So I, I just, I cannot guarantee the board that I have the bandwidth to take care of this problem in the time that it, the board's looking for.
No, that's fair.
I appreciate you saying that, because numerous times I have seen you asking for more stuff on your plate, and I go, I don't know how he's going to do this. So I appreciate you being candid with that.
If I had any basis to.
The goal isn't to bury, the goal isn't to bury you here and make you responsible for something that's over your head. And I don't want to set anyone up to fail. I'd rather point it in the right direction, so we can get this fixed.
So the general conversation here is that we need to find somebody who can take care of the broadcasting part of there to get that updated. In the old days, it was Comcast would come in, because they were under contract to do that stuff. But now, I guess, we own it. So.
So Susan had given me contact with Comcast. I reached out to them two or three times and never received any call back on that. And I think that's who set up the booth originally.
So we need to find somebody, the company, whatever it might be at this point, to come in and evaluate it and see.
Okay. I, I've suggested a couple of times that we talk to Gordon Parks, who is the IT supervisor at the high school, at the Samwell District. I'm more than happy to give him a call personally, because I do know him well, because he used to work at the Tribune, that's how I got to know him originally, and see if he can help us either do it, or find someone that can consult with us to help guide us through that process. But we need a point person that's going to help us to fix this, because it's a mess.
Yeah. And if, so, and if it doesn't work out with him, or he's unavailable, I'm at the point where the townspeople are always saying, you know, what can we do to help? If there is a town person that understands AV.
Yep.
Communication infrastructure, that wants to come in and dedicate some time and maybe spearhead a project to report back to the board to make an informed decision on, I am completely open to that member of the public.
Yep.
I also had a former neighbor who does the, all the IT stuff for the football stadiums. So he might be another resource. He doesn't live in town anymore, but I know how to reach him.
Adam, you look like you had something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted, am I on? I must be. I just, I'm not disputing anything. I just wanted to let Ellie know that I am in touch with Gordon. He's actually the one who gave me the name for the camera folks. But we're also looking, there, there was some scheduling issues. We're hoping, not this week, but next week, to be able to find some time to work out some problems we've been having.
So could you do us a favor and reach it when you, when you have that time where you can sit down? Could you let Ellie know and let her be a part of that conversation?
The, the ones, the, the three Xs, I think it's the second one.
Okay.
I can't remember. But because these don't have prices next to them, just the bottoms of, yeah.
That, that piece is, you say you can't find it. Does that mean it, it's not made anymore? It's not?
It's not here. We don't have it.
Not here. So we need to find out if that's not here as in not delivered, or not here as delivered and not where it is.
Right.
What piece is that?
So is it the, the induction loop system, Adam?
Yeah, the Williams AV, the, the one on the bottom there.
Yeah.
I will not swear it's not here, but I looked all over, and I cannot find that particular piece of equipment.
So, and then we don't have a, like, a receiving list to check it against. All we're doing is, oh, yeah, that looks like the piece.
Well, this being broken up into seven installation visits did not help.
Yeah. So, okay, so we're going to get some further details on that contract. And Adam is in touch with AV specialist from the school, and Ellie's going to participate in that as well. And so we'll see if we can get some headway moving forward on that. But still, if a member of the public is listening, and you are an expert in this field, please reach out to Susan at the Town Hall. And if you'd like to dedicate some time and resources and help me out with this, we will gladly take it. Okay. Cloud permit software cost estimate. All right. So this is reference the cloud permitting software. We had a presentation on this software at our last public meeting, when the department head meeting was also held. So it looks like the updated quotes to include the building and code enforcement modules and the addition of the planning modules. It looks like the cost estimate for that on year one is $9,500. Year two would be $9,500, and year three would be $9,500. In addition to those costs, year one, there is an implementation fee for the building software solution of 500, implementation fee for code enforcement of 500, and implementation fee of planning software solution. So those three items total an additional $2,000. So if we were to go down the road of entering into this contract, the first year cost would be $11,500, to include the implementation fees. And years two and three would be $9,500. To catch anyone up on this, this is permitting software that would essentially allow for the streamlined tracking and forwarding of any software based off of permits, applications, planning boards, allow for online semittals, allow for people to track the status of their permits online, make online payments for them. And has been proposed and recommended by our Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer. And I believe there, there was a positive response from the planning, the planning board side from the features that are available for them.
I had a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Does this negate all the scanning we had done with all the property files? Or is that?
No, it will, it will integrate all that. This will integrate with that.
Okay. So that wasn't a waste of time after all this?
No, no.
I, I have a problem with the money at this point in time. I think that if we do anything with it, it should be after the, the voting and see how the budgets go, et cetera. I mean, it's, it's gone from nine to 11 if we do it right, and we should do it right with, including everybody in there. But I just don't think at this point in time, I'm not.
Well, except that I believe that we had talked about this coming out of ARPA funds.
Yeah.
And because, because of that, we could do it now. It's not coming out of the budget. And, and I believe that since it's coming out of those funds, we could also consider doing the full three-year.
That's correct, that's correct, so we can do the full year, or?
We can do two, I think.
We can, oh, that's right, we can do two of them because of the.
One this year, 24 and 25.
Correct. But in order for it to become part of the, you know, we have, we'd have to have language in there that only allows to engage in the first part of that. And in order for it to become part of a year-three budget, it would have to be appropriated and voted on at that time to become part of the year three.
The year three.
But then the reasons we can do years one and two is because of the timelines from which our, our funds need to be appropriated and expended by.
Right.
So we do have the ability to approve $20,000 to cover years one, or I'm sorry, $21,000 to cover years one and two of the contract. And then it would have to be appropriated and approved by the voters to continue it into years three.
The problem I have with that is, that's great, but come year three, if we have to put it out to vote and they turn it down, what do we do? Take the software back?
Well, it would, I would expect that at that point, it would be, it would be built into our budget. It would be a budgeted item.
It would still need to be approved, because it would be the first time it'd be appropriated during that budget cycle. So, and it would go through the budgeting review process. And you could, you, I mean, at that point, you'd have had time to evaluate whether or not it was improving functions down there, adding value to the town.
Right.
And at that time, through the budgeting process, you know, you'd really want that department or the select board to be either advocating towards the Budget Committee to support implementing that in the budget, or the decisions could be made to not continue with it. And yes, we would lose the ability at that point, but citizens would need to understand that. They just won't have that option available to them. We'll have to go back to paper.
I, I would think after two years of, or a year and a half, however long it takes to implement, that they would, people would be used to it, and be hard-pressed to want to go back to paper.
But it's an opportunity, you know, through the use of ARPA funding to test it without a direct cost to the town. Yes, this is, ultimately, it's taxpayer money that's coming through the feds. But this is money that we at least have allocated for, that we can still expend from.
Do we have feedback from, from Tori, others using the system? I mean, we saw the presentation, but I'm, I'm not going to be the one using it predominantly, but I'd like to know if, did Tori like it? I'm assuming that Pedro did, because he brought it forward to us. What about Robin? What about Glenn Greenwood? I mean, these are the people that will be working with the system. Do we have any feedback from any?
Everyone that's looked at it is positive about, as much as they know about it. And we did reach out to the. References. And I've got a link, the email that's in your packet. They pointed, they were very detailed about, you know, some of the issues that they did have, but overall, they liked it a lot. The other one was a phone call. They couldn't say enough good about it, so.
And I saw the Chair of the Planning Board here earlier. I was hoping she was staying for this item.
Right.
But I, but it seemed like there was, she, she was in the affirmative supporting of it from being at the presentation during the apartment heads meeting.
Right. She was at the, at the, at the presentation, and some of the department staff was watching it remotely.
Calling, asking questions.
And sending her messages with questions. And I got the impression also that, that she was very much in favor of this.
And, and that was one thing Pedro said today, is just make sure, because, you know, when he was in, it wasn't necessarily including planning, but he wanted to make sure that you want that included. And also, he had a call from iWorks. They want to do a demonstration. He said he's looked at the pricing and compared the two, and he felt that that would be a little bit more money and not as user-friendly. So.
More accessible money?
Yeah, he said it was going to be more, to, to include.
So those two sisters will be compatible?
Well, it'll, this will be compatible with the DPW's.
It will. This will be compatible with, we were told. Were we not, Phil?
No, no, that's not true.
No, yeah, that is not true.
There's, there's, no, they, they're two different systems.
If you wanted to adopt iCloud's permit replacement for iWorks, they could port it over.
Yes.
But the systems don't necessarily talk to each other. But there's not a, there's not necessarily a one system suits all solution for the different, so it's, it's not necessarily inappropriate to have two different systems.
Yeah. The option he had was iWorks version of this cloud permit. Correct. It wouldn't necessarily be, you know, be better for working with DPW, because it is two different things. Right.
But I also have, you know, if, if there's reservations about making a vote until after, we see where the budget goes, I'm not opposed to that. But I don't think where this is coming from is necessarily going to change this at this time, where, where we're proposing it come from.
Yeah, the only, the only concern, even with the ABER, is that we keep talking about that, and we keep talking about using money from that in the long term, and we still have some projects out there. So, and we really haven't. And thank God we got the grant, because that was where all the money was going to go if we didn't. But now, you know, what, and I don't recall whether we have any kind of plan for the balance of the money.
Yeah, the plan is this Town Hall.
We did. We gave some guidance at, at some of the last meetings with the Director of Public Works and the direction, because he based some results off of the information he got regarding the HVAC upgrades, the stonework upgrades out front for the, and we picked all the ones that we felt within the parameters of the existing funds that we had within there, that we could pull from to make that available. But we also have the ability to use some capital improvement funds for those, for that project as well. But that project for the Town Hall is going to consume most of the remaining funds. But we still think that this was an appropriate use to move forward. But we don't, you know, this isn't, this isn't eligible for capital improvement funds that are already allocated and appropriated. But if there are some additional costs that fall outside of the full scope of the ARPA funds, we do have those already appropriated in capital improvements.
So what's your pleasure?
Well, for purposes of getting it up on the table, I'm going to make a motion that we enter into a contract to purchase years one and two of the building code enforcement and planning components, as well as the associated implementation fees for those with cloud permit.
I'll second. Further discussion?
With the, we already said it, but just to be clear, that the funding source for this is the ARPA funds.
That's correct. Any further discussion?
So I think I just wanted to clarify the, the integration, right? Or the, the communication between iWorks and cloud permit. If I remember what he said correctly, cloud permitting will generate emails, like if we set that up for notification, right? And they'll go into our notification system, whatever that is. And then, they could then be forwarded to Public Works. But there's not a direct link between the two, because they're two different companies, their software's proprietary, so they're not going to have a gateway.
Yeah, they don't, yeah, they don't essentially flag anything in each other's software.
Right.
It's, but it'll generate an email to you saying, hey.
It'll generate an email.
There's something that has happened in the permitting world that now falls into the purview of your department.
Yep, exactly.
And, you know, with Phil's process now, the way they do the iWorks, he may have to generate some type of task in his thing to say, hey, this fell under the purview of our department, just so we can track it and monitor.
Yep.
Right. But, but as far as integration goes, I believe we were told, and my motion would be predicated on this, that, that cloud permit be integrated with our assessing system and with our electronic files. Because like, I believe this is all, this is designed to pull from all that data.
From that and from Avatar. From Avatar, right.
And Avatar, right, correct.
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. So with those noted, I'll move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So four to one? All right, new business. We have the barn preservation easement checklist draft for review.
I want to be, Ernie's here. They've been working on the same thing. I came up with a, just a draft based on another town's checklist, just to start with. I know they're working on it as well, so.
Okay.
So, so Ernie, the Heritage Commission has not seen this? Is that what you're saying, Susan?
I did send it to them. I sent you my, I sent you my draft, right? My, my draft.
This looks like it was probably based on, was it Lineborough or Litchfield?
Yes.
Lineborough.
Lineborough.
Okay.
Well, we've been working with Susan on these things. And we, we've actually, Bob and I have, have, have another similar sample to that, that we've been working on also to look at, how, how do you do this fairly for everybody, and what are the actual factors that need to be considered? The, the one that Bob and I just recently have been working on is very similar to Lineborough. So I think, I, I think for our purposes, at least Bob's and mine, you know, we're still working this issue, and we'll work with Susan on that to try to come up with what is the final analysis for the, for the, for the town.
So at this point, Ernie, you're not, you're not prepared to bring something forward to us for consideration?
Right. It'll be a little while further.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, I do like the way this is going. And I guess as this is implemented in other communities, is it, does the board have a, you know, when a board weighs in on this, do they have a general consensus and fill this out together? Do, have you, have you seen it where board members individually fill it out, and then they compile it and see what their averages are based off of it? Or how have you seen it in implementation?
I think what we've seen probably best is a situation where, where somebody, either the Heritage Commission or somebody like that, goes out, meets with the applicant, looks at the barn, does a good examination of the barn. goes out, meets with the applicant, looks at the barn, does a good examination of the barn, looks at the criteria and then makes recommenda, you know, fills that form out, checking off which criteria are met and to what degree, and then come up with a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Okay, we've been out there, we've looked at this, you know, we've looked at the criteria, here's the ratings we've given the criteria. We recommend 50% or 60% or whatever. And so generally, it's been a board like the Heritage Commission that's gone out and done all the work and then given it to the Board of Selectmen, you know, for their review.
Yeah, because like, and I know you said previously, you know, the initial ones with the new law, they have, there actually has to be a public hearing on it. And so those recommendations can be advised and taken into consideration and additional input can be given.
Right. So I think the process that we're working with Susan on is, we, once she gets the application, we'd go ahead and take a, go out, meet with the applicant, look at it, make a determination if they're eligible even right off the bat, because there's no use in us going out if they're not. But make that determination, go out, look at the property, come back, discuss it, fill out the form, make the recommendation to the board. And then at that point, you'd have your public hearing, the applicant would come in, you'd make your decision at that point.
So the example that Susan has here, she has it actually as sum of the grades and then divided by four. So is, do all of the categories hold equal weight? Or is there, in your experience, is there one where the scenic quality of it weighs more than the accessibility, or are they all equal?
Still working on that.
This is just an example.
Right.
I understood. I understand that, but it's just a question.
There's also an interesting thing in here that we might want to think about, and that is that on number two, public access, the first one says view from a designated scenic road. We have no designated scenic roads in town.
Right, and that's why we're looking at the ones that we have, just to make them reasonable for the town.
Sure.
Rather than.
So do you have a ballpark of when you think you'll have something?
Designated by RSA, so.
Prior to April 15th?
Right, please.
Well, actually, you're getting away without coming up with. That's the, that's the application deadline.
Correct.
I don't think, we're not too far off, I don't think.
No, but it's obvious that the more voices that get involved in it at this phase, the better it will be. And obviously, Susan's done some fantastic work to pull this particular draft together. We talked to a few towns, and we've got other points of view besides the town that this is based on. And I think it's time for us to get together. And I think we also should have input from the Board of Selectmen in that working group to try to figure out what is right for Kingston. Because there's a lot of subjective value judgment, as Laurie indicated earlier, that could be made into this form. So how do you design the form is going to kind of dictate what you're going forward.
You sort of do have a select board input because you have a representative to the Heritage Commission.
Correct.
So whoever that select board person is can be your, your working person.
Yeah. But no, I think this is, I love, I do appreciate the structure of this. I think this, I think this is great. So it, it does give some articulation for why an individual is coming to a decision because it doesn't seem so arbitrary and subjective to, you know, maybe people's personal feelings about whose barn is applying.
Absolutely. But honestly, the approach that we were taking didn't have quite the same scaling factors that Susan put into hers. Her approach is very good that way, but we found some criteria that Susan has not gotten in her list that maybe should be in there. It just means we need to work together. That's all it means. And the more voices, perhaps, the better the product.
Yeah, so I'd say if you guys could just have some more discussions with, you know, the Heritage Commission and with your representatives who are there and get some additional feedback, I think that's the most appropriate way. Because, and I do like that idea of them maybe making the review of it and coming with a recommendation, but then the selectmen do have the opportunity to weigh in at a public hearing. The public will be able to weigh in, and then they can, you know, they can either fully take that under consideration or they can articulate reasons why they believe it, you know, it should be rated higher or lower. No, but I appreciate this. This is great.
Susan did a good job.
Good job, Susan.
So just a question, Glenn, how does this affect yours? As we have to, should we be doing something? I say now, I mean, the form, you know, forms are coming. Yours has already been put in for, and you're looking for some kind of recommendation on your percentage, so.
Well, because mine is a renewal and because the easement didn't have the automatic renewing clause, if I understand it correctly, Ernie, it's almost like we're starting from scratch. I mean, we have to go through the public hearing process, and we have to go through basically all the steps.
Yeah.
So some evaluation needs to be done.
Yeah.
And since I've already applied,
The clock is ticking.
There's a clock ticking, a 60-day clock to hold a public hearing.
So I think we need to schedule the public hearing for that matter because we can't hold that because the clock is ticking due to the submission timeframe. But even if we haven't formally adopted this, I think we still, we still have a decision to make as a board. But I appreciate even having a draft, so I at least have something better that I can make a determination off of that I think is appropriate.
So, so once the public hearing date is set, maybe back up for a date to get a draft completed, right? So if the public hearing is, I don't know, April 10th or something.
Yeah, but they may not have enough time. I mean, I, since the one, the one we have is a renewal, I feel a little bit more comfortable going forward with it as is, to be honest with you. Not to say that we can't take this.
But for those of us who don't know what the criteria is, what are we looking at?
Well, legally, right now, that criteria seems to be completely subjective.
So that's my, that's my point, right?
But you do have something you could base it off of. You have a draft. It may not be formally adopted, but you can say, well.
I mean, if you've seen Glenn's barn and you look at this stuff that we have here, to me, it's rather obvious it's the categories that it fits into because it does meet most of what's on here. Well, that's why I was.
Well, even if we don't have the final form that we're going to use going forward, I mean, the board, trying to take myself out of this.
The board has to make a decision. We can't, we can't wait for the adoption of the criteria if it goes past the time.
Okay, okay. I understand all of that. My point in that was if we have a draft and you have a couple of things, if the public hearing is April 10th, if we back it up and say, can we have a rough draft by March 30th and that's what we use? Then we have some criteria to use.
And I guess I'm saying I don't want to put a gun to their heads to get it done by March 30th.
The other thing that you can, the other thing the board can do is, and I really do like the piece of the Heritage Commission being the initial evaluator, if you will, and providing a recommendation. In my particular case, where this hearing is coming up fairly soon, you could, you as a board could enlist their assistants to do a review and make a recommendation based on this and based on some of the stuff they're working on, even if we don't have the final form.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'd be good with that, too. Is the board okay asking the Heritage Commission to do an evaluation of the current application that we have prior to the public hearing date? When's the Heritage Commission's next meeting?
The end of, end of the month.
28th or something.
26th.
26th.
26th or 28th?
So if they, if they could take, take up and offer an, you know, even without having a formalized, adopted review process yet, if they could give some input to proceed to the board and we could schedule the public hearing for our next meet, the next meeting following the Heritage Commission meeting. And that way, we'll still be within the timelines of the applicant to meet the time clock standard that we have.
Because I think you, I think your application came in around the 20th of February, 21st.
Check fix.
But I'm thinking, I wanted the beginning of April if possible.
So if the board's comfortable with that, I think that's a good way to proceed.
Well, I, I don't know what the rules are on this, but if the applicant agreed to a continuation, an extension of that time, I would think that, I would think that you could possibly do that.
Should we need a short extension of time? Would the applicant be okay with that?
I would think that the applicant would be.
Much appreciated.
Just for clarity on the dates, once the application comes in, you have 60 days to make your decision or it's granted automatically?
Yes.
April 15th is the date when all the applications have to be in.
Correct.
Okay, so I don't know where we got the April 1st date, but.
Well, it's just because his, his application, it's not 60 days from April 15th, it's 60 days from the time of his submission.
Yeah, I was just saying that's a safe date. April 1st is one of our meeting dates.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We have to act on the one we have.
Yes, and I think, I think we can do that.
And the reason mine came in earlier than April 15th is because it's a renewal. And when I sat down with the assessor, we realized that it was due for renewal and we had to get it going. So otherwise, it would have been probably around the deadline time like most of the rest of them will be, so.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate your assistance in reviewing that. All right. Any other new business before we go to board business?
Does the official Facebook page fall under new business or board business or old business? Where's that fall?
Probably board business is fine.
Okay.
Okay, well, I mean, we have, so now we're on to board business. But we do have the first item. We just had some responses to items about the PO boxes.
Is this all the information that we've received so far?
Yes. We did front and back for you.
Okay, so, and essentially what we did is we requested information from any departments that have a separate PO box just to get an idea of what is being sent there so we can make sure that anything that should be coming to the town hall or a different department is not going directly to another department. So we did receive a response from the Department of Public Works. So they have, they have some pieces of mail that are direct, addressed directly to the department head that were being opened before sent over. So they wanted to make sure that those items were being brought directly to their department. In addition, there were pieces of mail that were being placed in the wrong location or went missing. There was concerns about receive invoice, they do receive invoices, vendor information, educational opportunities, periodicals, state agency information, and whatever other correspondence directly relates to Kingston Public Works. So that's the response we got from there. And then we also got a response from the museum. And the museum receives professional journals and newsletters, invoices, as well as payments for our events. Having a PO box keeps our mail in the museum only and not getting mixed in with other departments. And also allows us to pick up our mail during post office hours, which are later than the town halls and also on Saturday mornings.
The, based on these, the only, the only problem I have with them is invoices. There's an invoice or a bill that should be coming to the town hall, not to the museum or.
Right, I was going to say, I don't, I don't think this is the information that we were thinking about when we sent this out. Right, so it is, yeah, exactly. Invoices from whom? Like what? That doesn't help us figure out what should be going to the finance director and what should be going to individual departments.
Well, I'm guessing it's all supposed to go to the finance director and then she.
I think it depends on, I think there's some, like, Amazon deliveries or things like that. No, I think they go right to whoever ordered it.
Well, that's fine. I'm only talking about an invoice or a bill or something.
Well, that would be an invoice or a bill. So I think we may need clarification from the finance director on what her expectation is that needs, that she needs to.
Because I think it'd be too, if individual departments need to order things where the physical item gets delivered and the invoice happens to come with the, yeah, we're not, it's absolutely ludicrous that we redirect it all to the town hall.
Yep, exactly.
The company. But I think anything that results in, you know, monthly bills or monthly bills or contracted services and stuff like that, it should be kind of, should be kind of coordinated through finance and then sent out to the departments. But, you know, I know there's been a lot of apprehension and disagreement with which veins and arteries things are supposed to be going. So I think we need to make, you know, we need to come up a solution for that. What, what we are requiring to come through here, but without the unintended consequences of, oh, well, it has an invoice here, we're shipping all this stuff here.
Great. And did we give a deadline on when we wanted something? So we haven't received anything from Fire, Police, or anybody else?
No, I actually, when I notified them of our morning meeting, I asked them to let us know if they have a PO box so we could discuss it at that meeting, and we didn't have anything yet, so this is all they got.
Can you reach back out and remind everybody that they need to get that?
We just need an answer so we can come up with a direction on how we want to handle this by next week.
Have we been clear enough about what we're asking for?
No, I don't think we, I don't think.
Or do we need to, do we need to tweak that request?
So you want me to mention invoices particularly?
Yeah, particularly. If it's anything that, that, like I said, my concern is anything that's contracted or reoccurring monthly bills, you know, that are, that are ultimately have to get paid out through finance shouldn't necessarily. I mean, I think the department should be aware of all that because they have to track their budgets. So they should always be copied or scanned or however our processes were doing that, but what, you know, what happens, you know, while there is, you know, indications that some items may be getting misplaced or missing, it can happen, it can just as easily happen on the other side, too, that they're delivered to the department and then it never makes its way over here and then we wonder why the bill didn't get paid.
Right, so I guess clarification, like on contracted, right, monthly, recurring monthly bills really is the invoice piece, not the product piece that people are buying.
Because I definitely don't want all the salt delivered to the town hall parking lot because they're dropping off the invoice.
No.
Yeah, let's, and, yeah, we just, can you send out a little more clarification on exactly, you know, kind of that piece? We get it, there's going to be items that are absolutely specific to your agency, such as I like the, you know, training opportunities, specific things that they don't, they shouldn't come here. We don't need to have the mailroom filtering what you can get. But there's just certain things that we need to make sure we make it here first. Okay, what was the other board business?
Oh, so we officially launched the Town of Kingston, comma, New Hampshire Facebook page today. It really didn't take us very long. Us, Adam did all the work. I verified with the town clerk that Caitlin can be one of the backups and Susan is also one of the backups. What Adam is going to do at the beginning of every month, and he would have done this today, but he'll probably get it done this week, is just do a post of all of the scheduled meetings for the month and then put a disclaimer that those are subject to change. But our ask is that all the departments and committees and boards make sure their calendar is up to date because that's where he's getting the information. So if it's wrong on the town website calendar, then it's wrong. So we need to make sure that those are up to date because that's where he's getting his information from. He'll also, I'm going to draft up a quick policy on this so we can get that done, but we'll send out an email direction in the meantime that if they have some, if the departments or whoever have stuff to post to get it to Adam by Monday morning, because this is not something that's going to be posted every day or monitored all the day, all the time to share other posts, right? It's just very informational stuff. Emergencies and things like that clearly will be posted when those happen, but so we'll just look for more guidance, but the big thing is make sure the calendars are up to date for your meetings.
Any other board business? Public comment number two. Any takers? Please come forward.
I, um.
Got to speak to you here. I know who you are, Glenn.
Yeah, okay, Ernest Landry, 17 Thorn Road, also on the Heritage Commission. I'm here tonight to talk about, with you about the renovations to be done on the town hall. I was at the Department Heads Meeting last week and heard the DPW Director's presentation. And I was a little bit surprised at the portion of the presentation related to the renovation of the stairs. And I wanted to chat with you about that. I'm here tonight to do that because I didn't get on the agenda early enough to be on, outside of the public comment section. But I would like to speak to you on, in a meeting where we are noticed as being there. But I was told that you probably wouldn't have a meeting next week because of the elections. And the following week after that is kind of a wild. of a while, and I didn't want to hold the DPW director up on what he's trying to do to do the renovations out there on the stairs. The key is that the town hall is really the key architectural element of the downtown area here. You know, it's 95 years, the building's 95 years old, the stairs have been there for 95 years, and it really, the, the whole face and character of this building is the front of the building. And the building itself just, I think, really represents probably the most significant architectural feature in the, right in the center of town. And so, the concern that I have, and I'm sure the other folks on the Heritage Commission probably have the same concern, except we haven't talked to, to it, because this meeting last week was after our meeting, is that, that what the proposal does is really changes the whole face and look and nature of this building, and it probably would change it permanently. And so, the concern that we have really is that whether or not it's, it's an appropriate thing to do at this point, or whether or not it, it could be looked at from the standpoint of what other options are, are available. I, I had a couple of pictures developed showing the, the building and stairs as they are, and as it would be with an eight-foot cast concrete set of stairs. Different, if you want to take a look at this. It's a major dramatic change to what this building looks like. It would be a major, dramatic change. So, we're pretty surprised to actually see that, and wondered, you know, if there is, there are some options to help to retain as much of the, the edifice as, as we can, rather than bring it down to that, to that level. The other issue is that doesn't really show in it a proposed handicap accessible ramp, which is proposed to be aluminum, and which would, would come around the building and around the front, and, and change that even more than it is right now.
Ernie, did you talk with Phil at all about why he was proposing the pre, the concrete prefab?
We did.
Okay. Because you know, one of the issues with those stairs is that we fixed them twice before, but of course they, we have winter, and they expand and contract, and the grout cracks, and the steps are unsafe, and hence we have barricades in the front. And we had, have had them recently, the last four years. It's, it's a challenge, I'm not, I'm not, I understand exactly what you're saying, and it's beautiful with a concrete, with a granite stairs, but are we gonna keep putting forty, fifty thousand dollars every five, 10 years to?
Well, I guess, I guess that's a question that needs to be asked. Was, was the last repair on those stairs an adequate and proper repair of those stairs? And will this happen every five or 10 years, as you say, or is there a way of repairing those stairs so that that doesn't happen?
We'll have to get an answer to that question.
What's that?
We have to talk about that, I don't know the answer to that.
So, anyway, that was, you know, my reason to be here, to see if there's a way of reconsidering this, to see if there are options to, to, to this proposal, because I think it will significantly change this building. And again, it is, it's a central focal point in, in the whole downtown area, and, you know, it's people in this town, nobody has ever seen this building with, without those stairs, even in 95 years at this point.
What were the original stairs?
Those.
Those are the original stairs out there?
No, no, absolutely not. We've done them, I know twice, am I correct in that, Phil? We've done them over twice.
Because during the presentation, the Public Works Director alluded to the fact that the original stairs were actually brick with cap.
Well.
And, and Bob is shaking his head yes, too.
Okay, I, I have a, well, maybe they, well, let me put it this way, I have a, a postcard of this building, it was from about 1930, and it has those stairs on it, so perhaps there were a few wooden stairs there for a few years, but this building was built in 1929, so I've got a postcard from 1930 that shows those stairs.
But, but it's not the wood, it's the concrete, you have grout, it puts the concrete and the bricks together, so as the bricks or concrete, granite expand and contract, it cracks the gr, the, the caulkings, so when that, and I'm not a construction person, Clark Kelly, but I, that much I figured out, so they get unsafe to step on, because that caulk ing doesn't hold it together, doesn't hold the bricks together. Correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, I, I kinda outlined the problem?
Well, well, while Phil is coming up, I, I'm pretty sure that it's, it's, it's really an issue with the base that the steps are built on.
That too, yes, yes.
That, that, that wasn't, has not been done properly.
It, it's a few issues. I have the original drawings for the, the building, and it shows them as brick, but these need to be maintained, and they have not been, so that's where the issues come in, where water gets in there, freezes, cracks, breaks it apart. The other issue is the subbase. The subbase is very unstable here, so that also, you know, it frost heaves up, and it, it sinks, and it breaks the stairs apart. And, and again, this was meant as a low-cost option to address all of those issues and move forward, and by utilizing brick and granite, I felt that appeased both stair parties, I don't know where people stand on that, but it, the current granite and the previous brick would be represented in the solution I put forward, so. And I do appreciate the scale of us, but, you know, we had also talked that there would be landscaping that would be added to the, to the expanse, so that's obviously significantly narrowed. I, I don't disagree with you, it's, it's not, I don't, you know, is aesthetically the nicest thing in the world, but every, you know, like I said, past four years, we've had a barricaded offset of front steps that people can't even use, and we have boards up there, and I don't know if the town has an appetite for it, do they, we're hemorrhaging money.
I understand, right.
And we have an opportunity, as part of this ARPA funding, to come up with a solution now that can satisfy these requirements, as well as, you know, and I, I, well, some people may not historically like the adding of ADA compliance, I mean, this is the primary focused building for which we function, and the importance to have increased accessibility for all people that can access it is important to me. This isn't just a historic landmark, this is the heartbeat of the town where everything is supposed to be happening, and to allow that access to people is an important issue to me. I, I do agree, I mean, I, I do like the steps, but I like ones that I can use and walk up and down.
Yeah, with respect to the, the accessibility, I, you know, I think we, all of us have somebody in the family who's either needs access or, or knows somebody who does, and I, I agree with you that access is important. I guess the question, I, I, I guess, not having been involved in any discussions around this, I guess the questions would be things like, is the elevator accessible enough as it is? Will accessibility up a ramp outside for, you know, 40 or 50 feet of, of run, is that necessary? Will it work when they get to the top stairs? Can you get an accessible ramp in this building to get them up the five stairs that are in there? And I guess that, I'm thinking the redundancy of having an elevator and then having a, an accessible ramp on the outside. If it's important to have that accessible ramp, is there an option other than an aluminum accessible ramp, so that it isn't as obvious and obtrusive as the, the aluminum ramp? So, those are just.
For the right price and maintenance, anything's possible.
Well, and those are the questions I'm asking, you know, it's, you guys have to make the decision. You're, you're responsible for the buildings, you're responsible for the prudent management of our finances, and, and I respect that. All I'm asking is, are there any other options than those stairs and that ramp the way it is? And if there are none, then that's fine.
And I would not be opposed to us having a public notice meeting if people wanna solicit input, you know, while we're continuing to solicit information and quotes on this, but you gotta remember, too, we are on also, we're on a time schedule to get money as appropriated that we're gonna use from these funds, because the last thing I'd wanna do is all of a sudden, yep, you didn't, you didn't use these funds for projects that are expiring, and guess what, anything you do moving forward, the taxpayers are gonna bore the whole cost associated with it, and maybe they have an appetite for that, you never know what goes before warrant and actually passes, uh, I don't know, but I, I wouldn't be opposed to us having a publicly noticed hearing to discuss this further, obviously sooner than later, especially with the Public Works Director actively seeking information to do this, but I, I wouldn't wanna stop that process of continuing to gather information.
No would I. And, and that's why we came tonight, to.
No, and I, no, and I appreciate that.
So that we can get something going if we need to get something going, and still have Phil have the time that he needs to do what he needs to do.
Do you want an actual public hearing for this, or just have it on, on agenda upcoming?
I mean, at this point, if I do a public, I mean, you wanna, it's up to you.
Well, if we're gonna do that, we gotta, have to put it back on Phil, but if we're gonna have a public hearing, we need some prices on what that one would be, I mean, a lot of this is about cost, and if we were to replace it as is, you know, is it $10,000 versus $100,000?
I think the cost discussion's gonna come up, but I, I think most people that are concerned purely about the aesthetics, cost isn't in the wheelhouse for them.
Well, then you'd have to put it through a warrant, I don't know what you're gonna say.
We could have a, I'm not sure a formal hearing is what we need, we need an opportunity to get feedback from the public. I think we could, we could have it on the agenda, have it as an open forum, and let people voice their concerns or suggestions if the case we do. And we can take it as advice from there.
And if we, it, it either way's fine with me, but if we do it during a regular meeting, we just really need to publicize that, not just have it as a line item on the agenda, because that's where it gets lost, and that's where people.
Right, well, we don't.
Right, right.
Right, it's gonna be the first thing.
Yeah, and if it's gonna be an agenda item, it needs to be clearly noted that the public will be afforded the opportunity to give input.
Yes.
Not just, oh, this is an agenda item, we're discussing.
Exactly, and sometimes it's got lost, so we need to make sure it's packaged properly.
If it's not gonna be a public hearing, at the very least, it needs to be something like a public listening session, or.
Public discussion of the options.
Whatever, something.
Virginia?
Virginia Morris, I'm the vice chair of the Historic District Commission. The Historic District Commission does not have jurisdiction over public buildings in the town, so I guess this is my perspective, but it doesn't hold a legal way. I agree with Ellie that input from, I, I don't know about a public hearing or not, but input is really important. Handicap accessible access is important. I, I approve of it, and I like it. It's also a real challenge to make it blend in to the home, the business, the environment that it's in. I'm not sure about the ADA compliant. Are we satisfied by having access with the elevator to come upstairs here? Sometimes you're not allowed to make someone who is needing access come in the back door. I'm not, I'm not sure if ADA would consider that, the back door, as opposed to the front door, since selectmen's office is there, town clerk, I'm not sure that's considered the back door. So, those legal aspects need to be looked into, but the appearance in the front of the building, I agree with Ernie, that we need to pay attention to what that looks like in our town. It is not only the, the business and political center of our town, but it's actually the visual center, and if we're going to do, if we must do, access with a handicap ramp, it should be, I haven't checked with my board, my opinion that I will project for my board is that it should look as close to the materials that the building is made of, to camouflage it as best as possible, therefore, an aluminum ramp might be really inexpensive, but it's not the way to go. We need to make it blend into the background of the building as best we can. And we've done this over and over again in the Historic District Commission with really lovely old homes that have had business, one of them is the, the animal, the animal dermatology home on Main Street. They need to come in the front door and be greeted and tended by that, that business. That was really tricky to make it look just as inconspicuous as possible, not to detract from the facier of that building, and we worked hard with those people to do it, and we did it, with building materials, with plantings, et cetera, along there. So, I think that if we need to, by law, come in the front of this building, that we should at least put as much money forth as we need to. I don't, I don't know about the bricks and the cement on the steps, but I'm talking about handicap accessible. If by law we need to.
And I would just caution you, to, to make it so aesthetically pleasing that it blends, may make the entire project cost prohibitive, so we end up with the still broken stairs and boards up and unable to use them, because we have a finite amount of funds that are currently available to move this, move a project like this forward.
Chris, I.
And I can't, and.
I, I understand that, I'm just making this perspective. I don't know that it needs to be that expensive, I'm just saying, we should pay attention if we're going to do handicap accessible on the front of the building, to make it blend as best as we can to this significant building in our town. That, that's my plea, and I think Ellie's idea of public input is a good idea, whether it needs to be a public hearing or just part of the select board's meeting.
We still might not make the public happy, though.
Well, we never make the public happy.
I, I have to.
Nobody's ever totally happy with what we do.
Guaranteed, at least 50% will not be happy.
That's true, but, but, but it's, it's, it's a forever decision, and I think it's important to pay attention to, to the visual aspects. I understand the financial restrictions.
And I get it, I, I, I just, I'm concerned, because we've had several projects now in this town where, especially with these historic buildings that have led to costly repairs that have not held up, apparently we're dealing with an issue now where the museum roof was not done properly, is that correct, Phil?
Are you serious?
So, we've spent a ton of money on that, and now we're going back to have to either go after them to get it to fix it.
But, but.
There were cost overruns on the gazebo downtown.
But not done properly, but not done properly isn't part of the plan. The plan is, we'll do it properly. If whomever we hire doesn't do it properly, you folks have to figure that out, but to plan to do it properly and make it look compatible with the building, that should be the plan.
It, it may be a nonstarter, anyway, because we don't know if we can do a ramp up the five stairs, and we don't know if it's wide enough, so, I mean, there's a lot of things, I think, that still have to look for ADA compliance for, you know, because you can't, you can't have a really steep ramp, because, so, I don't know how we would get up these five stairs, anyway, so I think there's still a lot that we have to look at, but Virginia, your point is well taken, so thank you.
And then inside, yeah, exactly.
And to quote our Fire Chief, we may need an architect for real to do this, if it's gonna happen at all, or we're going to replace the steps we have, and in 10 years we'll have to deal with it again.
So, the advertising of how, whatever we're calling this, whether it's a listening session, or an agenda item, or a, whatever we're doing, needs to be promoted so that people are aware of it, I mean, it's a good, good reason to be using the new Facebook page.
Did you hear that, Adam? Very exciting, we can have our, all right, he's all over it.
Did you hear that, Adam? Very exciting. We can have our, all right, he's all over it.
And, uh, and obviously it'll be an agenda item, at the very least. It'll be on the, uh, well, I mean, we could use the website as well. I mean, any opportunity, we should just-
When do you want to set a date for that? I don't think that we have too much going on with the election to do it next Monday.
Do you want the 18th?
18th or the 25th?
25th will be a morning meeting, so.
So probably should do it the 18th.
18th.
We've got enough information, Phil, for that? Is reference to me?
You know, Phil, historically accurate, handicap accessible, lowest bidder, not street pretty, no change. Anything else I'm missing? And within our budget? Yes. No problem. You want it tomorrow?
If we just get public input, we're not going to have every, there's no way we can have everything ready.
You make, you make some decisions from the public input.
That's correct.
So we can't have all of the information.
I don't know if he has that kind of magic. Now, listen, maybe the public, maybe the public will advocate that we take no action on the steps and they come back with a warrant article next year to do more costly repair that maintains the current status, but fixes it longer. See what they come up with. All right, any other public comment? Phil?
Uh, based on our previous discussion, I got a quote for a engineering firm to come out and do a pavement condition assessment, uh, of our roads, since there are some questions as to what we should be doing and how we should be doing it. So I just wanted to leave that with the board. So as clearly my opinion is not, uh, considered to be accurate. So this will allow them to get a second opinion on the matter. And of course, that, like everything, has a cost associated with it. So I will leave that with Susan for the board to review.
Is this a chip seal or bust? Is this a comparison on chip seal, whether we should go forward with that or the micro abrasion on it or whatever?
They do an assessment of all the roads in town-
Okay.
And come up with operable or plant-
It's not cheap either.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, seeing no other public comment, we'll move on to correspondence, applications and purchase orders. Uh, so I'm just going to go through the, oh, yeah, Ernie, did you want these photos back? Uh, we have a notice of intent to cut wooden timber. That's tax map R12 L27. It's going to be Fry Road and it's an acreage lot of 22 acres. And the acreage cut will be approximately 20 acres. So they've outlined everything in here that they need to. So I don't see any issues with the board signing that. We do have the appointment to public office in here for Susan Prescott. I'm appointed to the Historic District, uh, District Commission Member for a term of three years to expire March 31st, 2027.
So I, I realize that we passed that around to sign it already, but I'm going to make a motion, uh, that we are, renew, uh, Susan Prescott's appointment for three years to the Historic District Commission.
All right, first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, similar, we have an, uh, an appointment to public office for Susan DeHart, uh, also to the Historic District Commission for a term of three years.
That one, I think, is an alternate.
Right.
Yes.
I don't know if I changed that form.
I, I don't know if it says it on there, but it would be because the, uh, there are no full-time seats currently open on the HDC. So, um, before I make the motion, uh, Virginia, were you planning on making some comment about this?
I just wanted to encourage the board to agree with Susan DeHart's, um, application. I spoke with her. Sometimes people get confused about Historic District Commission, Heritage Commission, Historical Society. It, it, it does happen and she means to be on the Historic District Commission and-
So the request we have is correct?
The request you have is correct and we would be pleased to add her to our board.
Well, I, I know Susan DeHart and I can, I can vouch for her. And I know normally we like to have individuals come before us before we make the appointments, especially a new appointment. And if the board wants to do that, we could put it off, but I would, I'd certainly feel comfortable making a motion to make the appointment.
And so is this an alternate position?
It is.
Okay, so what I'm, I just hand wrote in alternate after that, just so it's clear?
Yes.
It has to be alternate because there are no full-time spots.
No, I feel comfortable. I don't know that we need to bring her in. I know, if I know when it's practical, we've been trying to do this, especially after certain elections where a bunch of seats are getting filled. But I have no issues.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Susan DeHart as an alternate to the Historic District Commission.
Second.
All right, we have first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, and here we have a permanent application for a tax credit exemption. This is a veteran's tax credit off of Nine Page Road. And it looks like we have all the appropriate documentation in here. And they need all the eligibility requirements for that. So, uh, there's no issues in signing off on this. Laurie, I think you have just had a couple signatures in there for appointments. Uh, we've already discussed those. We do have a, excuse me, a purchase order. So this is the finish, the install of the truck fill pump at Central. So this is the complete installation on the pump. This is for all remaining labor and materials, uh, needed to complete this job. It does have a line item. It does have the appropriate amount of money in there. It has been reviewed by finance, so no issues there. Correct. Uh, so we do have in our packet of representation letter. Uh, this is, letter is provided in connection with the audit of the financial statements of the town of Kingston. So this is just the, the representation letter indicating that, uh, they are representing with us. So it's been signed off by the Finance Director and I have to sign it as the Board of the Chair. If nobody has any issues with that. No issues. Uh, we had numerous, uh, payments and Laurie had already discussed some issues earlier that's being followed up on, but, uh, shouldn't be any issues. These are all approvals for wealth, uh, you know, uh, human services assistance. Uh, and then we had some payroll items in here. Appointments to the Historic District, got that. For your tax credit, the intent to cut. We need to do the approval of the meeting minutes for February 26th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
First motion by Glenn, second by Chuck. Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to those sentences? Okay.
So this, this Boston cane?
You want me to hold it over here for you?
Are you eligible?
So, so how are we, who's in charge of this? Who publicizes it? How, how do people-
Well, that's what I'm trying to determine. I, I, that's Hampstead, I think, that I copied just last minute today. Yeah, they do have a, a longevity of residency requirement.
Okay.
Not all towns seem to have that, but they don't all have all their qualifications available readily, so. So it is just a question of whether you, some of them are through Heritage or Historic District that would maintain that, but they have to get their information from the town clerk. You can put it out to residents to apply.
Do we have any, any ideas of, you know, who might be out there? I mean, who might qualify?
I asked, Tammy knew of a few. There was the one that we, that started the whole thing that came to Marissa's attention, a 96-year-old. And Tammy seemed to think she knew several other 96-year-olds, but, you know, it would depend on their birthdays, how long they lived here and, you know.
And then also it would be, when would we do this? What time of year would we do it? Would we have it go along with, like, Heritage Day, but that's not till August? So, you know, there's, I think, a lot of questions and things that we need to answer.
I, I agree. There are a lot of questions and it'd make, would make sense to designate either the Historic District or Heritage as the source of putting a proposal together, talking to other communities, see what they do, and then make some recommendations to the board.
Because I think, you know, if, if they did it on Heritage Day or right around that, that's plenty of time between now and then to actually kind of do it right and not just push something out. But, I mean, it doesn't matter.
They would publicize it better and then, of course, it wouldn't be a annual event because that, you have to wait for that person to-
Exactly.
Be ready to give up the cane.
Exactly.
And it probably would be, I mean, if, if another board were identified, it probably would be, it probably wouldn't be Historic District Commission because they're responsible for the land uses within the district. But Heritage Commission certainly, um, maybe even an opportunity for the Museum Committee.
Yep, exactly.
Maybe the-
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah. Yep.
Would you like me to reach out to them?
Yeah, to Museum Committee.
Yeah, I, I think it's a cool thing.
Well, it is.
It is a cool thing.
I'd like to see it resurrected in town for sure.
Susan, did you happen to reach out to Hampton Falls? Because they do it.
I haven't, so, but I will.
Okay.
I think the original 13 states were the only ones that were doing it, if I'm correct.
I think so. Karen Anderson is the Town Administrator. She would, she would be the person.
Yeah, I'll talk to her. I didn't talk to anybody in person. I just went to websites and-
Okay, because they, they actually have the post cane right in Town Hall. It's in a case with the latest person who has been, uh, issued it.
And we don't have the, our original, but our replica would be, stay here, I guess.
Well, yeah.
It works, it works.
It would stay here.
It looks pretty good. Oh, I also tried to get, see if I could get that engraved. And so far, anybody I've talked to doesn't do that sort of thing, um, metal engraving on a rounded-
Maybe the Museum Committee can find out.
I'll ask them about that as well.
Colonial Engraving doesn't do that?
Those, I talked to them and they referred me to the store across the street.
Well, I know that as part of the, like, the, uh, the window restoration project, the stained glass windows, I mean, they did, they did engrave plaques for all of those. And so I'm sure that they have, uh, good contacts for that sort of thing.
Okay, I'll try and get some more.
So next week is town election. What are we thinking for the meeting on Monday?
Do we need to have it?
Well, it's, we're obviously going to be in for a long day. Well, first of all, provisions, we have a couple of people up for election, so we probably will not be inside working the elections.
Well, that's been, we've, oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you can't, yeah, you can't, okay.
And what will happen is, Tammy did get an updated, uh, response. We can work the election as part of our duties as selectmen, as select persons.
Yeah.
But come, but not handle any ballot. And when the polls close, we leave the, uh, closed area.
Viewing area.
Correct, but not-
You shouldn't, you can't be signing the boxes.
That's correct. That's correct. We'll have to actually get a couple of people designated to substitute that night.
We're going to have a long day. I, I just, unless we have pressing items on the agenda for that Monday meeting, I, I think we're going to have enough on our plates for that full day. I mean, I would just still, in case anything emergency comes up, maybe we should just, if we have to have an emergency meeting, we would probably hold it at the traditional time or maybe even some other time during the day. But if there's nothing pressing, are you aware of anything that may come up that we need to vote on? There's no, this isn't like where we can finally vote on the, the point of entry systems or anything like that?
No, that's the only thing I can think of that could come up between now and then, but, uh, because I haven't heard from them.
And, and you'll be posting that we'll all be at the polls anyways. There's nothing to say. We couldn't hold a 15-minute. If it's posted that we're in session that day, we could go to the stage area and conduct an, or in the foyer, anywhere, and sign any documents or whatever. You see what I'm saying? We're in technically in session that day.
I just, I will tell you, one of the few things that I would like to vote on moving forward before I leave, if I have the opportunity, is that point of entry system. And for some reason, the opportunity presents itself and we have to hold an emergency meeting in those days.
We should do it.
If everyone's amenable to that, I'd like to do that.
Well, at this point, we can wait and see and then you can just have a, a meeting at 5 o'clock on Monday and be done.
Unless, unless any emergent issues come up before the board that need to be taken up, there'll be no Select Board meeting due to the town elections on Tuesday.
And the next step in that process, though, is the releasing of the RFP and-
Oh, yeah, so we're just, we're really just going to be releasing the RFP at that point.
That's all we're doing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we've already taken the actions that we needed to take. We gave the responses at our last meeting to the questions-
And there's no formal vote that has to be taken to release the RFP. It can just be done with, everyone's had a chance to review it. If nobody has any issues that need to be taken up, they can, we can move it forward, so.
It's really just an administrative, so. It was a good try.
Hey, anytime. All right?
So don't adjourn the meeting quite yet. So it's too bad we have no audience members here, but hopefully some people are still watching.
TV land.
Oh, well, there you go. So in anticipation that this might have been our, our last meeting, we all got together and discussed the fact that we wanted to recognize you for your service. Thank you for your dedication and for your leadership for over the last year plus. And, uh, and, and to thank you. And so you're going to be having some extra time. So we thought-
I'm not accepting write-ins for anything on the poll, but-
So, so, so we thought you might need to have, or would like to have, a little bit of, um, something to relax with.
It's appropriate for television, so we're fine.
Oh, I like the looks of this. I definitely like the looks of this.
Is this one of those DUIs?
Ah, thank you very much. This is, I will make good use of this. So thank you very much. It, it really has been, it really is a privilege and it is an honor. I know I, I've kind of talked about it before, some of my emails out to the town employees, thanking them for the opportunity to work with them. But this position can be very thankless at times, but it is important and I appreciate everyone that stands up to do the job. I mean, I know Glenn and I have butted heads over the years on planning board issues and other stuff, but it really has been a privilege to work with you. It's been a privilege to work with all of you, you know, and Ellie, I, you know, met, you really got involved with Ellie and Chuck, to get involved with the Select Board stuff. I remember my first meeting with Ellie was fairly adversarial. She was the, she was the moderator for the elections and we had, uh, some disputes about what was constituted as electioneering and we had some spirited conversations. But it's, all the backgrounds of everyone I've had a chance to work with has been absolutely amazing. I enjoyed my time on the planning board. I really enjoyed my time on the Select Board and, and over the past year and a half, we dealt with some difficult issues and I'm glad I was here. I hope maybe some of the stuff I had to offer guided us through some difficult times. And I look forward to seeing whoever sits in these seats moving forward. But thank you to all of you. You, you have made it worthwhile. And volunteering for these types of things are a tremendous amount of work. And like I said, you know, they're not always the most gratifying at times. You, you deal with some people that are upset, but it really opened up an opportunity for me to meet a bunch of people in town that I probably wouldn't have ever had any interaction with the different boards and committees. Some may, you know, hate me forever, my opinions on things, but I think I've made more friends than enemies during my time and tenure, uh, serving the town. And so it really is, and it, it has been my pleasure and I sincerely mean that. So anyone out there that's listening that's ever been hesitant about whether or not they should join a board or a committee, start somewhere and do anything, volunteer for anything.
Do something.
It, it, it is, it is, it is rewarding. And, you know, people ask me, well, why are you stopping to do it? And my family sacrificed a lot over the, the past decade for our involvement in different things, everything. You know, and even more than that, uh, you know, my wife and I have continuously coached sports, done Cub Scouts. My wife obviously sits, still sits on the, the school board and she's running on a post for reelection and that. So we're still going to be involved in that. But, uh, it's important at this time, my kids are at an age where I've missed a lot of dance recitals, sports things and other opportunities that I only have a few more years, uh, you know, another four, five, six years where my kids are in the house and probably want my attention, except when they're calling me for money. So I'd like to be able to enjoy that time with them. And I'm sure there'll be some, uh, some callings back to public service at the town level and other community levels, uh, when the time is right. And I look forward to filling in, but please, people, step up, do something, do something, do something, please.
We, we really appreciate your leadership because I think every one of us has gained from your ability to do your homework when it came to researching a topic or an RSA and you set a high bar for all of us and for that I thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, and I know some people may not like my delivery sometime, but I, I usually won't shirk a code. Good old God, so, uh, no, thank you all. I do appreciate it. So thank you very much. so thank you very much.
I'll still have you on speed dial.
With that being said, meeting adjourned.